Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, March 2nd, 2015. This is a regular session of City Council. It is about 7:01 PM. We have a quorum this evening with six out of seven members present. Regarding disposition of minutes, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular session which was held January 20th, 2015?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Those minutes have been approved. We also have a regular session held February 2nd, 2015. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Some moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the regular session minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The minutes have been approved. Is there any communications from City Council members present up here? No communications. From the mayor's office?
Yes, I do have several items. And some of these will be on behalf of the mayor, and some of them will be on behalf of council, things, items that have come in. Council will be considering tonight a resolution, and that will be in support of the Ohio Development Services Agency. They're going to be appearing before the state House Finance Committee hearings this week. And this is the organization that works with Buckeye Hills, Hocking Valley Development, and they have helped fund such items in the county as nutrition programs, transportation, Alzheimer's education, our passport program, the AceNet incubator in Nelsonville, and other infrastructure projects. Earlier, we've had our Holzer Road, access road approved through these funds. And most recently, an example of this is a $400,000 South Side Bridges rehabilitation project that Councilmember Pappy will probably have some additional information about, but we just received the award notice on that. So that one reading resolution in support of them will be coming forward tonight because the hearings are this week. So we need to forward that letter of support to them, and I appreciate your consideration. Council members are also in receipt of the Athens County Municipal Court Annual Report. And I did want to let people know that council members have received it. Some of the information is, is that they had a caseload of 12,572 cases. Their total receipts were $2 million, a little over $2 million. And I think what's also impressive is we've offered as options for persons on probation. We offer community service. So one of the options, so he's reporting, Judge Grimm is reporting on the statistics for this, and there were 613 hours of community service, 964 pounds of canned food to the community, 3,300 hours of community service worked by those unable to pay for fines. And also, the court's underage drinking diversion program provided 4,600 hours of community service. And then there were another 6,600 hours of community services sanctioned. So total community service hours of 15,219. So it's a real benefit to the community, and I think a useful kind of program. So just wanted to let folks know about the operations of the municipal court. As we approach the end of winter and we're heading into spring, another number of items that have come up, some calendar items, some things that are going to be going on in and around Athens and on the streets. Snow and ice removal updates. Co-director John Patchke reported that we had 17 warnings issued last week. The areas that they concentrated on were the safe routes to school in the east and west section, also North Congress Street and Stimson Avenue. Of those 17 warnings, I believe we had 100%, within 24 hours, 100% compliance. So they either had citizens or homeowners or property owners are required to, within a certain number of hours after a snowfall, either clear a path, spread sand, spread salt. Ideally, they would be clearing the entire sidewalk, but there are another, I'm sorry, I transposed my numbers when I was typing. There were 71 warnings issued.
Okay.
So I'd like to have that correct number for the record. Thank you very much.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I get for my late afternoon typing.
Can I ask a question? You know, with the students gone now, what are their options if, you know, some, I've, I noticed like on the corner down here across college and...
Mill.
No, don't. Anyway, where the sorority is, the whole side is icy.
Right alongside City Hall, that's an abandoned fraternity house.
And it is treacherous. And I know people who have called me because they have to walk in the street where people rip around that corner, and the students are gone, and it's icy and it's nasty.
Are you talking about the Delta Gamma House further on down, or this white house right here?
The anchor sorority.
It's the Delta Gamma. Okay.
I mean, and there's other places where students have left. Who's the ultimate responsibility of who does that?
Well, they attempt to reach whoever's listed as their maintenance person on call. Everyone's supposed to have that at every rental house, as it were. And because of the constraints within it, so many hours after the final snow, they will start up again when we get this note come Wednesday.
Yeah, but the thing is, is if it's really icy, like my neighbor cornered me, she was out walking her dog, she's 87 years old or something. And there are places that it's just slick as ice because, you know, they aren't putting down salt. And who's ultimately responsible, you know, about their, if somebody falls and breaks their neck, who's?
Is it the resident? I'm sorry, I have to defer to the law director.
Actually, I think, I'll try to answer my question, because our office was involved before when they issued the citations. And it starts out owner, occupant, person responsible for the premises. So I think in the past cases, there were two people cited, and they were cited into municipal court, and it was the owner. So there's a list, owner, occupant, or person in charge.
Right. And I would just encourage, we don't want to go out and bust people all the time, it's a waste of our time if people just went out. And especially now that people are gone, you know, students are gone, they need to go out there and make sure, and because it's...
So you're saying the owner.
No, the rental owner. Management, I mean, and if they go through a management person, it's just, I encourage people to go and look at their sites, because I think some of them probably said, oh, I cleaned off the snow, but now you have, because of the melting, you have now thin sheets of ice. It's kind of like...
If I may, it was a rather challenging ice, we call it SNIC, snow and ice control event, even for us right around here at City Hall, because it was so cold that the salt was not working, and then it was so cold that the plow couldn't plow up the ice. So we hope to see with the rain, a lot of this wash off, and then we'll start anew. And similar to the trash cans and getting the notice out front to get your trash put out and your cans brought back while you're on break, they did the similar notice regarding snow.
And I'll add as well, too, I do applaud the city and universities' efforts. I've been spending a lot of time on foot throughout the community and have noticed their sidewalks, both ours and the universities', are very easy to access. I'm guessing at some point, too, we may want to look at this very issue in a committee meeting to explore other options of how we want to address sidewalk clearing.
I think that's happened, and I think they've got a pretty good plan going now. Since I haven't heard of 71 and a half warnings ever.
Well, a warning may accomplish something, but it doesn't necessarily mean that the sidewalk is cleared. As we noticed, there's a lot of sidewalks that are still bad.
The report we got, the follow-up, was that all were in compliance of the ones that had been issued.
Okay.
But again, it's staged.
Sure.
71 warnings over a three-day period, and you have to wait till the next day to go back and check.
I understand that.
And you mentioned the stretch outside, not in front of our building here, but leading into our building, which was pretty inaccessible last week at one point when I came in. And I'm, I know at some point, we've talked about the possibility of having city crews go ahead and do something like that, and then bill the owner. I don't know if we have a mechanism in place for that.
That's what I was referring to, we may need to look at that.
We discussed that this morning as well, and actually, I did ask for the city crew to at least lay down some salt, because it was warmer today to help alleviate, because it is a main path directly here, and how we then assess, but we haven't brought it up to the law director, so she's hearing it for the first time.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Also, going on this week, we're going to have, the city crews will be doing street sweeping as the weather permits if we get above freezing. If it gets more snow, of course, they'll be doing more snow removal. So we appreciate that. Richland South, some people may have noticed postings on this and letters that have gone out, I know, to the business owners on Richland Avenue, that we're beginning the next phase on that construction. So there'll be reduced speed limits, and the orange barrels will be out. During Phase 1, that I believe is to begin very shortly, we'll have the northbound lane using the center lane. And then in Phase 2, that will be May through August, we'll have the southbound lane using the center lane. So just watch, and just to be especially careful of the construction crews that are out there right next to the traffic. So we're just trying to urge people to use caution and drive as slowly as possible. And the other option is get on the highway, and if you can, on either way of it, either to go to the south Y and come in if you need to go to someplace towards the south end, or if you need to get uptown, to try using the highway and the roundabout, so using those other avenues, it will be a help, as well as West Union, that's another option for people.
Businesses will be open, and they will still appreciate the patronization, as it were. We discussed today the possibility, and I think we've landed at just warnings initially, to warn everyone to slow down to 15 miles per hour, because it is so tight, and for safety purposes.
Can I ask, while we're on this very important topic, when we say very shortly, what are we talking about? Because, you know, residents have been champing at the bit for this project, which has been delayed, and an out-of-town visitor noticed today just how bad, and I said, it's coming, it's coming. So do we have...
We were instructed that by next week, you ought to see some orange barrels up there, so it's a go.
It will take us through August, so people are going to need to be patient with that, but the changes are going to be grand. And people can go to the city website to look at the street renderings on that. I think there's a place that has projects and the drawings for them, so they can see what a sample area of that would look like.
And I think it's just important to remember that it's not just a paving of the street, that it's a total reconstruction with the infrastructure below the street. And when people say, well, why is it going to take till August? Because it's major sidewalk work, it's new water lines, sewer lines, it's all of these things underneath it. And, you know, none of that is, happens quickly. So once it's done, I think it'll be done and passable and very nice for many, many years. So I hope that people can appreciate that we're trying to do it right from the start.
That's a good point. It is, it's very complicated and a very expensive project. Grateful for the grants that are helping to pay for that. The week of spring cleanup, on to another topic now, will be, for the city, will be the week of April 20 through 24. So those are business days, and I believe during that time, people have the option of setting out additional materials that they're needing to get rid of. And there'll be descriptions on what's allowed to be placed out on our city website, so people can check with that. And I believe there'll also be a notice in the utility billing, so you'll get the notice. We have the spring brochure for the community center, just a plug for all the activities going on. The crew out at the community center works really hard, and a lot of other people who are instructors for the program. We appreciate all the efforts. So that's out and available and registration ready. For events going on in Athens, we have five or six that's been really busy, one of which is to direct, once again, in the community center, to direct people to the city website to fill out a survey for the pool. And I think they ask for a top three votes on, top three features that you would like to vote for on both the indoor and the outdoor sections of the pool. And then there are also public focus groups that are occurring over at the community center, and these will be March 4th.
Wednesday.
So Wednesday. And there are times available for seniors, for general users, for pool staff, for kids, people interested in offering comments on competitive swimming. And then city council members will be attending then at the end of the day after all the sessions at 7:00 PM, so.
I have one comment about that.
Yes.
That's for everybody. It's open to the public for those particular focus groups, or were people picked to attend those?
There were invitations sent out. City council should have received theirs. We received ours from the administrative side, and I can get some more clarification, but I believe the seniors is probably through the United Senior Center.
And I assume they looked at, when we had the first public hearing, I assume they looked at people who signed in there and pulled people in, or?
That's my understanding, right. They were outlining the invites, and that they have gone out Friday, so.
Okay, who picked those?
Check that. They worked with our consulting firm.
To pick the people who would attend that?
But, I mean, public comment is open and ongoing right now.
There's a website, right? They have a website open.
They do have a website open.
And we have a link from our...
Yep. So, okay. Another event that city members are involved with is the Heroes Breakfast, which we discussed last week, in that there were several staff, city people attending the Heroes Breakfast, and we approved that. Just wanted to make note that there have been two additional names added to the list that we'll be submitting to the auditor. So we just wanted on the public record tonight that there were two additional names that went in. And part of the reason that city staff are attending is because the, our Service Safety Director nominated the first responders to the West Union Street Fire. So that's a good thing to have done, and wonderful that they're being honored, so we very much appreciate that. And that Heroes Breakfast, by the way, is March 10th. A few other things happening. On April 29th, the Tree City USA District Awards, and that's for the, for our district for the state of Ohio, will be attending that award ceremony here in Athens, Ohio. So that's a distinction. And we'll be proud to host those, that Tree City Awards Program, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. I think there's a luncheon for the awards being given. Andy Stone, our Public Works Director, let us know today that he'll be thinking about dates for our annual infrastructure tour, and that's open to council members, as well as the press, as well as anybody else who wants to attend, any citizens, that's fine. We usually have a bus available. We are considering the possibility of going during the week rather than the weekend, given the busy schedule with weekends between now and May. So we'll probably, I'll be asking Clerk of Council Debbie to help us with some dates where folks might be available. I know we've got some dates where Stone, Director Stone, will be away, so I'll give you those blockout dates, but then otherwise than that. Council members have, on another item, received an invitation for Honey for the Home at Hillel with City Council. And this is, she's selected several dates, and this, I think Councilmember Cochran, you've been familiar with this?
This is a continuation of local artist Patty Mitchell's work. As everyone knows, she's done Honey for the Heart down at the central venue, and had a lot of public art celebrations through Brew Week, Halloween, and various occasions like that. So she's doing a residency now at Hillel, and Hillel is reaching out to the community trying to bring in various community groups and constituencies, and so they've extended the invitation to City Council to come in and spend a couple hours making art. And the theme is more focused on what makes a home. So it's rather than Honey for the Heart, it's Honey for the Home this time. So I look forward to participating, and it can be a great, great way to spend some time with council members outside of council chambers.
And so we've got several suggested dates, and once again, we might check with Clerk of Council to set up some possible dates, but March 18 and 19, from noon to 10, are the parameters that we're looking at, that they have extended the invitation to city council members. So we'll need to agree on a time and figure that out. So that's a great, that's a great idea. And the last item that I am aware of is that the Athens City Historic Preservation Commission, our newly appointed and hardworking commission, is hosting a lecture by Barbara Powers, who's Deputy State Historic Preservation Officer. And she's going to be talking about buildings in the Athens community that were designed by the architect Frank Packard. And so it's titled Frank Packard: Architectural Realities of a Midwestern Architect. And very important, and, you know, I've just learned something from reading this press release, that we have Ellis Hall, Gordy Hall, Chubb Hall, Lindley, Bentley, Tupper, and the President Street Academic Center, which were all designed by this prominent architect. And it's a timely topic, in part because I know that the Historic Preservation Commission has sent several letters and had several conversations with the university about the President Street Academic Center, the fact that it is on the National Historic Register, and yet at this point is recommended for demolition. So this would be an important opportunity for folks to learn more about the building. It is. Tuesday, March 10th, the most important information, Tuesday, March 10th at 6:30 PM at the community center.
What time?
6:00 PM.
6:30, March 10th. And any other comments or items? Yes?
I just got one quick question on the stormwater drain. Where, of course, the snow piles have let by, is, because we're having this rain getting ready to come, and then this melt, is our, is somebody going to be checking the drains on those to make sure, because I open mine up, so you don't have to worry about that one, but...
I appreciate that. We will be checking them, but we're not going to be able to check each one, and a lot of times, it's the old finger on the dyke kind of effect, as soon as they flood and get in there and get them backed up, and so.
And I know former Councilmember Bain would check the drain on Columbia often, so thank you, that's a good note, that if people are living near a drain, you know, just to take a look.
Couple neighbors.
Common sense, yeah, clear them out. Yeah, so that we can get some of that water away. Yes. Okay, any other comments? I think we're finished.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Nysli. Any communications from Law Director Lisa Liason?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Law Director. Moving on to ordinances for third reading. And a quick reminder that I am council president pro temp, and I will be voting as well as reading. Ordinance 09-15, an ordinance determining to proceed with replacement of existing sidewalk improvements associated with the West Union Street Infrastructure Improvements Project Number 280, as described in Resolution R-09-14, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to approve 09-15. This is our replacement ordinance for the West Union sidewalks. I really, we've talked about this extensively. One of the nice parts about this was that no one really had an issue with it and agreed with the improvements and the cost assessed to the property. So we're ready to move forward with this ordinance.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance 10-15, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State on Saturday, April 18th, 2015, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM for the International Street Fair. This, too, is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to approve 10-15. I think our date of the first International Street Fair was 1988. So this has become quite a tradition in our community, and again, looking to support the efforts again this year.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments before we vote? All those in favor of the ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance has been adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading, ordinance 01-15, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two replacement buses for the Athens Transit System, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 08-15, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Patterson. Questions? Ordinance 12-15, an ordinance creating a local historic district to include certain buildings on West Union Street, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
I'd just like to remind people, there'll be a public hearing, March 16 through 4th, session, council session here, 7 o'clock.
It's March...
16.
16, thank you.
Just to remind people, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any other questions or comments? Moving on to ordinance 14-15, an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of an agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from July 1st, 2014, through December 31st, 2014, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 15-15, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an addendum agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from January 1st, 2015, through June 30th, 2015, and declaring an emergency. This, too, is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. No questions or comments? Ordinance 16-15, an ordinance authorizing an adjustment to the non-Union pay scale, and this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 17-15, an ordinance amending ordinance 0-99-14, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code, introduced by all council members. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 19-15, an ordinance accepting the Ohio Department of Transportation's pre-qualified consultant list for ODOT-funded projects, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 2015, an ordinance amending ordinances 74-01 and 52-07, Athens City Code Title VII, Parking Regulations, Chapter 7.05.26, Regulation of City Parking Lots, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Any questions or comments? Ordinance 21-15, an ordinance authorizing improvements to the municipal parking facility, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Questions or comments? Any updates? Moving on to ordinances for first reading, ordinance 22-15, an ordinance amending ordinance 121-14, authorizing staffing levels and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Who wishes to speak on this?
I will, I will speak to it. Basically, we discussed this last week. It's a two-part, first part is creation of a chief city prosecutor position. This is just to reflect the reality of what has been going on in that office for several years, and making it a line item. And then the second is moving a custodial position from the parking garage line item to the general fund line item. This will help to address some issues that we've had in the parking garage funding. This will help to address some issues that we've had in the parking garage funding.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any other questions or comments regarding this ordinance? None from the mayor's office?
Moving the position of the custodian from the parking garage over to the general fund, as Councilmember Fall explained, is based on a recommendation from the Auditor's Office as there was review of the revenues and expenses in the parking garage. And since that's a proprietary fund, what we're looking for is to make sure when we move forward with the funding or the borrowing the money to pay for the parking garage repairs, that we have an adequate source of revenue and don't have too many expenses. And so this was a, what she recommends is a judicious change in where those expenses for that custodian, the average funds.
Thank you, Mayor. A one-reading resolution, moving on to the R-05-15. A resolution of support for continued funding of the Ohio Development Services Agency, ODSA Appalachian Assistance Line Item. And this is introduced by all council members. Who wishes to speak tonight?
I will.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall.
This particular program is served through the Buckeye Hills-Hocking Valley Regional Development Corporation, of which we are a long and happy member. Their chief reason for being is for economic development and job, job development. They asked us as a member to put forward a resolution to encourage the continued funding of this important, incredibly important source of funding and expertise for this area. We get, we pay a certain amount per year as a member, but we also have the ability to be able to apply for funds that they garner through this process. And just example would be the Holzer Clinic Development, where we've developed some of the roads out there. You know, we got $400,000 through the ARC, the Appalachian Regional Commission, funding that they help to, to provide and to manage. And so I encourage the member, council members, vote yes on this resolution. This is one of the most important sources of grant funding that we have. And it's always, always seems to be on the chopping block because they just don't really think about the Appalachian region down here. So it's really important that we provide some support for it. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fall. Any comments from the mayor's office?
The only other thing that I would point out is that this, this particular money, as Councilmember Fall explained, is administered through the Regional Development District. And just so we're aware of it, they do have a, an administrative fee in that. And so the text for that, they have worked with the allowable increases and will be submitting that as part of this resolution. So that's, that's the final section on it, that it allows the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission $150,000 and then funding to the East Gate Regional Council of Governments at $50,000. So these are administrative fees, but for quite an extensive amount of programming and grants awarded in southeast Ohio. So it seems to be a reasonable amount.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilmembers? We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of supporting the one-reading resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The resolution has been adopted. Moving on to announcements and other business. Anyone wishing to meet in committee next week?
Finance, personnel?
Yeah, me. Development, fine.
Transportation, no.
That'd be a whole big party.
Transportation and.
We'll just stay miscellaneous.
Was there a finance and personnel, is that?
Yes.
Okay. And was there discussion of a possible special session? Is that my understanding as well, or the need for one?
Yes.
Okay. And will that be held? Okay, thank you. Any other announcements or other business?
I do want to make an announcement.
Thank you.
We were granted, Acting Mayor Nisely mentioned this. We were granted the grant in the amount of $400,000 for the replacement improvements of the bridge on Richland Avenue. This, it's called the South Side Bridge. It's near the, where 33 goes over Richland Avenue. It's below that, though, and they need to upgrade. Is that correct? Is that where the bridge is?
Bridges, so we're also including?
Right.
Dairy Lane, yeah.
Yes, and the Dairy Lane. Oh, Dairy Lane.
South Side.
Yeah, yeah. So that's an important, another grant that we were able to garner. So I just wanted to mention that.
Can I ask a clarifying question about that? Will that work take place as part of the Richland South project?
We're going to attempt to coordinate as best we can, but like we said, it will be a little bit painful down there on the avenue. We, we cannot begin that project until July 1st.
Right. The money does not, is not freed up until July 1st. And I don't know that it's been bid. It will have to, are we doing the work?
We'll do all that. We can go ahead and start our design engineering, but.
Right.
We can, we'll want that actually legislative, our legislation already to have been passed to allow us to bid and we just can't award or begin until July 1st.
Thanks for the clarifying question.
And thank you for the update as well, Councilmember Pappy. Any other announcements or business? Are there any comments from citizens on topics that were not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to adjourn from council's meeting this evening? A motion and a second? All those in favor of adjourning from the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are now adjourned at approximately 7:38 PM. Have a nice evening. Thank you.